All right, very good. Welcome to the City, Lincoln City Council Meeting of June 6, 2022. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief pause for silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, if any, including an address, that you may be represented, representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of that individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will then vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of each month prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today is notation. Due to the Juneteenth holiday, city council will not meet on June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Next would be our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Does anyone, would anyone like to address the city council regarding anything on the consent agenda? Anyone? Give Mr. Christie just a moment. No? Okay.
Okay, we can move on and vote on these items. Item one A is reappointing Dean Proch now to the Dangerous Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire December fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, introduced by Shob.
So moved. I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
Don't leave me hanging.
Shob, seconded by Bowers.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item one B is reappointing Craig Geist to the Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire April first, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Okay. Seconded by McGinnis.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item one C is reappointing Bradford Moore to the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by McGinnis.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold, oh, excuse me. Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item one D is reappointing Brad Roth to the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by McGinnis.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item one E is reappointing Ron Geary to the Mechanical Advisory and Appeals Board for a term to expire April fourth, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by McGinnis.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item one F is reappointing Ron Geary to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term to expire April fourth, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by McGinnis.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item one G is reappointing David Johnson to the Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire April first, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by McGinnis. Call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Item two A is introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by Washington.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. We can move on to our section four, which is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Item four A is application of L D R Enterprises LLC doing business as Elle's Kitchen for a Class I liquor license located at twenty-seven eighty-five South Seventeenth Street.
Beautiful. I know we have some speakers here today. Mr. Christensen, please.
Well, we are. L D R stands for Lawrence, Doug, who's not here, and Roy. And we have started a new enterprise. I'm gonna let Lawrence talk about it.
So Elle's Kitchen stands for Lincoln's Kitchen. And it's made of people from kind of all over the world. We have a chef from New Hampshire, which is a different world, right? And we have people from Mexico. I'm from France. So it's very representative of Lincoln. And we are doing gourmet American comfort food with a little bit of a French twist. And we need the wine to complement the food. It's not so much that we're a bar. It's not so much that we're gonna be heavily, you know, focused on alcohol. But it does complement the fine dining food that we're doing. So that's why we're applying. Plus, today's a big day for me to apply because it's D-Day. And so D-Day is the anniversary of American veterans coming to France to save my country of birth. And without them, I'd have a German accent. And it would make it a lot more complicated for me to apply for liquor license, so. I'm grateful.
We are open Tuesdays through Saturday from five P M. on. We are not open for lunch, except for what we will call catering in. So if there, we've noticed there's a lack of good places to have private lunch meetings for organizations around our community. And so if there's an organization out there that's interested in having lunch on a regular basis perhaps, or even a one-off, they can contact us and we will do a custom menu for them for their lunches. And I invite you, as a city council, who has done this before when it was the Normandy, to call us up and get ready, come down on a Monday before city council. We'll treat you well. We will charge you. Is that clear? We're in this business to make money. But we are in this business to make Lincoln a better place and to provide a place where people can come together. It's a neighborhood establishment, and but everyone is welcome.
Very good, very good. Just for the record, could you please give me your addresses as well?
Oh, sure.
Sure. So personal address?
Or the business address.
Okay, so it's twenty-seven eighty-five, South Seventeenth, six eight five zero two, in Lincoln?
Very good.
Right across the street from Station Eight is Seventeenth and Van Dorn, which will be a construction site for about eighteen months, starting in October.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Questions at all?
I have a, I have a couple of comments. Well, Mr. Christensen, it's, it's, if you understand the liquor procedure here in Lincoln, as the former chair of the I L C, here you are in front of us asking. I never thought I would see you asking for a liquor license. And you've done a good job in describing the business and what you're about. But could you tell us a little bit about how you intend to serve alcohol? Will you be cash and carry? And will you also package to go?
That is, packaging to go and cash and carry is not our intention. Our intention is to enhance the experience while people are in the restaurant. We applied for a Class I because you never know what the future can bring, but our intention at this point is to keep it in-house.
Thank you.
Other questions at all? Seeing none. Okay. Thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Please vote yes. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, I'm gonna read item four B, manager application of Renee De Villiers for L D R Enterprises LLC, doing business as Elle's Kitchen located at twenty-seven eighty-five South Seventeenth Street. I'll be calling item four C, manager application of Cassandra M. Gareth for Quick Shop Inc. Doing business as Quick Shop at numerous locations, twenty-three oh two Cornoscar Highway, forty-seven fifty Coward Street, fifty-nine hundred Fremont Street, twenty-nine forty North Fourteenth, twenty-three thirty North First Street, twenty-seven ten West W Street, thirty-three oh one Holdridge Street, fifty-six hundred Holdridge Street, twenty forty South Fifty-Sixth Street, forty-four hundred Cornoscar Highway, twenty-eight eleven North Forty-Eighth Street, thirty-nine thirty-nine A Street, forty-four hundred O Street, and fourteen forty-one North Cotner Boulevard.
That was a lot. Okay. Is there anyone here to do to talk about this item, manager application for Quick Shop? All right. Seeing none. Let's move on.
Be calling item four D, application of Yard Investments LLC, doing business as Gate Twenty-Five for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately fifty feet by two hundred feet at three hundred Canopy Street on June tenth, twenty twenty-two, from ten A M. to two A M.
Is there anyone here to discuss this application of Yard Investments LLC? All right, seeing none. Let's move on.
Item four E is application of Yen Family LLC, doing business Hero Eighty-Eight for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately three hundred fifty-six feet by two hundred thirty feet at six oh one R Street, three fifty Canopy Street, on June tenth, twenty twenty-two, from eleven A M. to twelve A M.
Is there anyone here to talk about the application for Yen Family LLC? We do. Hello, sir. Please come on down.
You should come talk.
Please state your name and address just to start off. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Chadwick Fisher, six oh one R Street, Suite one hundred, six eight five oh eight, for Hero Eighty-Eight.
Could you tell us a little bit about the, the special designated license that we're, that's before us today?
It's for a huddle party that they're having in the rail yard and partial of the Canopy Street that we'll be closing down. It's for us to help serve alcohol to their employees and to their guests, as well as serve some of our food as well in a, in a takeout capacity.
Very good. Any question? Thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Washington.
I like to do this.
Miss Washington.
It's fine. Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. So in looking at the applications for the S D L, there are three that are very, very similar. They're all for the same day. But I did notice they were different sizes. And I don't know if you can.
And times.
Yeah, and times.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I know you, you're not everyone. You're just one of the applicants. But can you tell me, what is the timeframe on this event?
The exact timeframe is from seven P M. to eleven P M. From what I was told after the fact, it was a kind of a last minute application before they had all the details. So we wanted to make sure we covered as much time as we could. We obviously will only be serving when the, the event's happening. So the reason there's three different, I guess, measurements, I guess you could say. I think there was still as well as some finite decisions to be made as far as how the fencing was gonna be going. So huddle, the huddle representatives should have that all turned in for the event's application to close down the street.
And then one other question. Will you be inside the fence?
Yes, we will.
Okay. I couldn't tell from the map if Hero was gonna be inside the fence.
The way they did, we had kind of the labeling was outside of the fence, but the bar was inside the fence. So yeah, our tent will be set up inside. We'll make sure that nothing goes outside the fence.
All right, thank you very much.
Other questions?
No, thank you for explaining all this, guys.
Definitely. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
Calling item four F, application of the Bar at the Yard LLC, doing business as Longwells for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately three hundred fifty feet by two hundred thirty feet at three fifty Canopy Street on June tenth, twenty twenty-two, from seven P M. to eleven P M.
All right. Anyone here to speak on this application from the Bar at the Yard LLC? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items four A through four F.
Seconded.
Moved by Shob, seconded by Washington. Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close Monday and Tuesday, right?
Sunday.
Sunday and Monday. So tomorrow, tomorrow for dinner, right?
Yeah, but now the sun begins.
I'll be going to section five, public hearing resolutions. Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for May first through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right. Is there anyone here to discuss the claims of five A? I don't see anyone. May I, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I'd offer a motion. We were asked if we would amend five A to exclude one of the items from the denied list. Just one second. I believe that is Mr. Hanson, the claim of Steve Hanson from the denied list.
Okay.
I do have a question. Would we like to make the motion now, or would you like to wait when public hearing is over?
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. We jumped the gun there. We'll do it at the end. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes. I'll be calling item five B, approving a contract between the city of Lincoln and First Star Fiber Inc. for recyclable material processing services pursuant to bid number twenty-two dash one ten, beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with option to renew for one additional four-year terms.
Well, Ms. Garden?
Good afternoon. I'm Donna Garden. I'm Assistant Director of Utilities for Lincoln Transportation Utilities.
Yay.
And with me today is Dale Goobles. He's the C E O and President at First Star Fiber. We're here to talk about the contract that's before you. It is a, for our recyclable collection sites and the processing of the materials there. This is a four-year contract with a four-year renewal. If you'll see by the total, it's about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. But that is the budgeted amount that we put in the budget based upon our current contract that we have right now. And the current contract has a flat fee in it. This actually changes monthly based upon the weighted average commodity value of the recyclables that we're selling. So we actually think, and we wish that Councilwoman Raybold is here today because we finally are getting some profit from the revenue, from the items that we're selling. It actually decreases our processing costs. It doesn't actually give us revenue. So the new contract shares the recyclable commodity risk and reward with our, our processor. And currently, our weighted average, if we look at the current price, we're paying sixty dollars a ton to process the materials. If we look at the weighted average commodity value right now on the market, we are now, we would be paying thirty-five dollars a ton. So we've got a lot of savings associated with this. Glass processed at a flat rate, and everything else then rides on the commodity markets. And Dale, if you'd like to say a few words too, please.
Dale Goobles, First Star Fiber, as Donna said, and my address is Papillion, but our operation is at forty-eight, forty-eight fifty North Forty-Eighth Street, close to the landfill. And I just wanna thank the city. We've been your processor now about seven, eight years, something like that. And we appreciate the partnership that we have with city on this. Here to answer any questions you might have.
Perfect. Any questions? Mr. McGinnis?
I have a quick question. In the contract itself that you signed, it says First Star Recycling. Is that the corporate name, or is it First Star Fiber? Is, the corporate name is First Star Fiber, and yes, we, the D B A is First Star Recycling. Many of our salespeople were saying, people don't know what we do, so we put recycling in there.
Very good. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be calling item five C, approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three interlocal agreement on stormwater management between the city and the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District to address stormwater quality and quantity issues.
All right, very good. Tim?
Hello. Tim Zock with Transportation and Utilities, Watershed Management Division. And I have Paul Zilke here, the General Manager of the Lower Platte South N R D. And this is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three work plan between the city and the N R D. It's based on the nineteen ninety-six interlocal agreement. And we put these plans together every year based on the work that we plan to do together. We cost share on a lot of our operations and projects that we do. Couple of examples are the M P D S Permit Administration enforcing sediment erosion control and stormwater runoff. As well as one of the larger efforts is the Dead Man's Run Flood Control Project that we're still in the process of working through together, so. Paul, you have anything to add to that, or?
No, just, we appreciate working with the city and hopefully get it passed today and keep moving forward.
Very good. Questions? Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, this is one of the very good interlocals that we have. It seemed to work really well. So I appreciate you guys working together. Speaking of Dead Man's Run, what is the timing lately on that?
We're, we're in design right now. Construction's probably gonna be, won't be started for another couple of years, I think maybe twenty-four. And then construction's gonna take a couple of years to be completed, and then we'll go through like the letter of map revision process. So it'll be a number of years before we actually get the floodplain map revised, but.
Good. Other questions? All right. Very good. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, when you're ready?
I'll be calling item five D, many of the issuance of multifamily housing bonds, Union at Middle Creek Project in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed thirty million in one or more series on behalf of Union at Middle Creek L P to provide funds to finance a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a one hundred ninety-two unit multifamily housing project generally located at twenty, at Southwest Twenty-seventh and W and West B Streets.
Hello.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Colleen Duncan. I'm a partner at Gilmore and Bell. We are the city's bond counsel. The resolution before you today amends a resolution you approved in December of last year related to this financing. We have a slight delay, but we're, you know, everyone thinks, working towards a closing on June fifteenth, so that's the, the current timeline. But the, the changes before you relate solely to a change in the lender from what was planned at the end of last year. So the lender that, that's currently in place requires a different sort of kind of document. From the city's perspective, it functions exactly the same, but we wanted the, the words in here and the kinds of documents referenced in here to match the actual, the actual documents that'll be signed up. Those are, those are the changes. I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Duncan?
Yeah?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis? Councilman McGinnis?
One of my questions is, where do you see the market and how fast is the interest rates changing at this point?
Oh, that's a really good question. So I'm a lawyer. I'm not a banker. Unfortunately or fortunately, I don't know. But the rates have changed somewhat, but not significantly. I think it's important to note that, and we went through this really carefully with the financing team, the initial interest rate of not to exceed six percent is the same initial not to exceed six percent, six percent interest rate that we saw at the end of last year. That's not a change. But of course, interest rates have gone up. That's just a fact. But the, it's a variable rate transaction, so there'll be some movement.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Seeing none. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, when you're ready?
Yes.
Item five E is approving an amendment to the zoning agreement for change of zone zero six zero one two to allow retail or or restaurants with drive-through services on the property between Ninth and Tenth Street, north of Van Dorn Street.
All right, very good. Mr. Gergen, Mr. Harris?
Good afternoon. Tim Gergen with Clark Anderson. I'm here to present an update to an old agreement on the property in between Ninth and Tenth Street, Van Dorn and Hill Street. It's a agreement, change of zone agreement with the city that the property owner had with probably sixteen years now in progress. So I want to make a simple project even simpler and kind of just show you what are, essentially our change is. I'm going to see if we can't have the monitor turn on. So this is the original site plan for the agreement. This was a contemplated site plan that we were envisioning back sixteen years ago. It essentially had commercial retail uses. This was a speculative coffee shop with drive-through. This was a speculative fast food drive-through, multiple drive-throughs. This was a strip mall retail building with a drive-through in component. The zoning agreement has stipulations of certain uses that were not allowed on here. Coin-operated, I think, dishwashing or. Coin-operated, I think, dishwashing or laundry units, mechanical automotive service shops. We're not changing any of that, essentially what it was is no drive-through use was allowed on the northern part of the property, which is shown here in this orange line. So that was one of the restrictions, the main restriction that we are asking to have for, change on in this. So here is the, the new site plan. So now that we've had a vacant lot finally developed for, I think it's been vacant for twenty-plus years through here, we now have an auto zone here, and what we're proposing is a drive-through coffee shop in this location. Here is that line that was prohibiting drive-through shops. This is the one where we would like to remove this line prohibiting, prohibiting the drive-throughs here. In exchange for that, we are showing a much less intensive use. You can kind of see with our traffic memo. We had seventy-three hundred square foot drive-through restaurant, a sixty-five hundred square foot retail, for a total of approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-three PM trips. Now what we're showing is a seventy-four hundred square foot auto part store and an eight hundred square foot drive-through coffee shop with a total of about eighty-four PM trips. So a seventy percent reduction in trips for this new site plan. So it is a much less dense use, it has a lot more landscaping, part of our site plan that we are showing here, envisions, envisions more green space and around the coffee drive-through shop, more landscaping shown in through, I'll wait for that to come back up.
Lost our.
It'll come back. Oh, no.
Just one moment, please. It's the entire system.
Oh.
Here we go.
So part of the new items that we're showing on the site plan is enhanced additional landscaping and along here for the drive-through. We're removing an approved access point to Hill Street. And we've increased the distance from this existing house from, I believe it was seventy feet to now one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet for any sort of building use through there. We've also shown a fence to show and block the headlight glare into this existing house property as well. We've met with the neighborhood extensively on this change. And we have the owner here, the owner's rep, and the land user here as well, if you have any questions for me or them at this time.
Very good. Any questions for the group?
I have a couple of questions, Council.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Gergen, if you could leave the visual there? And expand it just, just the smallest amount so that everyone can see what we're looking at.
I think that's about as far as we can go.
Okay.
Do you want me to zoom in on it some?
I was thinking zooming in, but that's, that's it, thank you so much. So could you show the direction of traffic, where does a person place their order, where would they pick up their coffee? Let's start there.
Yeah, so you would enter in the drive-through facility here, you would have an order board here, and then you would pick up your coffee at this point.
Okay, and so the speaker would be at the order board right there, sort of on that, that area?
So it's closest to Tenth Street.
Okay. And you mentioned PM counts.
Yes.
So is the coffee shop planning to have PM hours or morning hours?
I would assume morning hours.
And what are the morning counts?
The morning counts will be very similar to the AM or to the PM, but as far as comparing uses, the City of Lincoln uses typically PM traffic counts. But the AM trips for a coffee shop would be, still be more or less what we are showing today. But the big thing we're trying to depict with the traffic memo is the reduction. So instead, maybe a seventy percent reduction, we might see more line lines of a fifty percent reduction in trips.
Okay, yeah, I think the neighborhood association was, I think when they've talked about their concerns, they're talking about the, the, the flat jump from where it is today to where it would be. And so I have some, I just wanted to ask some questions about those AM numbers. And will they have the same opening hours as the auto zone, or does it open before the auto zone?
I'm not quite sure.
The coffee shop, I mean, so when we talk about AM trip numbers, and, I mean, I, I've stood in line, I've waited for coffee in the morning. I won't say with what vendor, but.
I'm not quite sure on the auto zones hours, but predominantly it's a more an evening use.
Right, so they're, they're, they don't necessarily overlap in their peak usage?
No, they would not.
Okay. Can we talk a little bit about the screening?
Sure.
So there's an R-one, R-two zone there at that corner, and there's really only one house left. And can you tell me about your interactions with that homeowner? And what are you doing to adequately screen, let's just talk about the new, the, the coffee shop, not the auto zone?
Sure.
What are your pla, and then how does that account for any kind of additional traffic? And the, the, the sound and lights from additional traffic?
Sure, so, well, the, this will be screened for the City of Lincoln standards, for the ninety percent screening for six feet and below. This is one-hundred percent screening here, this will be that fence, there's really no room but for a fence to be placed here in this location. For the, the sound, I guess, I would think the, maybe the fourteen-hundred, fourteen thousand vehicles on Ninth and Tenth Street might create more sound than the, the speaker board for the coffee.
And then what about the entry on the alley drive? So those cars coming in will create some kind of, you know, there's a light wash that happens there.
Correct, correct, so it aligns in with the existing alley on the north side of Hill Street. Unfortunately, with our access management policy, we removed all of our drivelines on Tenth Street. We've remained one as a right-in on Ninth Street here. But for our access management policy, the access to Hill Street is really our, our best location for access. We have removed an access here that was more in line with where this existing house is. This was on our existing plan. There was a, a drive lane out, would have, that would have been more in line with the existing house here on the north side of Hill Street. This is now being removed, and so our only point of entry in and out on Hill Street is at this point, which aligns in with the existing alley.
I don't think I have any further questions right now.
Okay. Other questions, Councilman McGinnis?
Has that been replatted to show this? Because right now you're looking like the coffee shop will be built over lot lines of one and two.
That's correct, with a favorable vote from the council, we will move forward into replating this into its own separate lot.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Gergen, could you talk to me a little bit about the, the six-foot tall fence that's being put, abutting the property with the existing house on it? Am I correct in that it, it seems to maybe stop halfway down the drive aisle there, is that correct?
Uh, no, I think that's just our line type, the fence would be this entire width of the property.
Okay, but it does not extend further north than that?
It does not, uh, this property is the same ownership as the rest of the development.
Okay.
So we didn't want to impede or block entrance or access to this property, or this property has no other access except from the alley.
Okay. Okay. So, let's talk about early AM hours. Let's say in the winter, seven o'clock in the morning, we could have headlight glare transposing over to those lot lines.
This headlight glare would be transposing straight through here and would be then taking access most likely coming back out and going downtown.
Okay, and then when we're turning in?
So we were turning in, yes, we would have some.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Gergen at all? Oh, yes ma'am.
Yes, I do have a question, so on the turning, let's just talk about the fence, so the six-foot fence, where is it? There's a drop, there's a, an elevation drop between the alley drive and that residential house.
Right, there's a retaining wall on this property.
Mm-hmm, okay. And I noticed in driving around the, this area repeatedly, that it looks like this house, this lot sits lower than all of the development area, and it looks like a drain system, a French drain system and a retaining wall had been installed on the south side of that. So it sort of gave me some indication that there's some water flow that's, that had been happening or is happening from one area to another?
Well, there, this, this is built like an alley, so it's got an inverted crown. And so we have a storm drain inlet here, and it is being piped back into, that was one item that's in agreement sixteen years ago. A lot of the City of Lincoln regulations has changed since then, we have new stormwater quality regulations. And so we have a stormwater quality underground system here, located here, so this inlet is then piped back and put into our stormwater quality underground system.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed a, a wide line of gravel on the single homeowner, the single home property?
Along her back property line through there.
And on the north, on the south side, the retaining wall and then a line of, a wide line of gravel. And so I thought, oh, is water, is there a water issue, should we be thinking about that property and water? I know what our rules are now, but sixteen years has gone by and we've made some changes.
I think that might be a product of property lines, and so this was a gravel alley back before it was developed. And I'm assuming the gravel has just been dispersed over across the property lines of the alley. We have since paved this, and so that paving of the alley went up to the property line, so probably what you're seeing is just what was the
Okay.
old edge of the gravel alley.
Yeah, I, well, let's see if anyone comes forward.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Gergen? All right, very good, did Mr. Harris want to speak, or? Go ahead.
If there's questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Very good. We'll, we'll, we'll remember that. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? Please, come on down, if, ma'am, if you could just please start with your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Dorothy Zordell. And I live at nine-hundred Hill Street. And, I don't know, I have the only driveway on Hill Street. Last year, when they were building that horrible auto zone, it was a tremendous mess. I was lucky to get out of my driveway. Nobody paid any attention to the fact that I had a driveway there. And all the neighbors north of me use the alley as a driveway because they don't want to get out on the racetracks of Ninth and Tenth Street. And to have another, we've got scooters down at Thirty-third and one up on Fourteenth. What in the Sam Hill do we need another coffee shop, especially in a neighborhood? It used to be very nice, but Speedway has managed to do quite a bit of destruction to it. And he can leave it as a green space for all I care, but putting a coffee shop in there is just, and I get the trash from the auto zone people leaving, and it winds up on my lawn, who has to pick it up but me, or the guy that mows the lawn? And I think this is just a ridiculous idea to put a coffee shop there when there's so much traffic. And I have the big highway semis coming down my street all the time because they miss the bypass. And the last thing is, are my property taxes going to go down? Probably not. And what's going to happen when I leave my house and it gets sold? Probably nobody will buy it because of all the traffic. And that's all I have to say, but I think it's ridiculous to put in a coffee shop. You've got a neighborhood there, leave it that way, instead of financing somebody's deep pockets that are already there. And that's all I have to say, but I'm very angry about it. I put up with all of that stuff last year, it was absolutely ridiculous. If I'd had an emergency, I couldn't have gotten my car out of the garage and gone either east or west on Hill Street. And I just don't like the idea. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, questions at all? No, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? Very good.
That concludes our public hearing resolutions, we cannot vote on these items. Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from May first through May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, introduced by Shobe.
So moved.
Seconded by McGinnis.
Now I would offer a motion to, to amend, we've been asked to remove Steve Hanson from the denied claim.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Call the roll on that.
Question.
It is, yes, sir.
A question for our city attorney.
Johannse Christi, City Attorney, five-five-five, South Ten.
Okay, is there a reason we're removing this?
Uh, we received additional information relating to the pending claim, and we would like opportunity to review that additional information.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, yeah, so we're not denying?
Correct, I think it-
We would, we're not putting this back onto any claims list?
Correct, well-
Or just removing it?
Correct, it was originally placed on denied to come before you to approve it as being denied. We got additional information, now we're asking to remove it from denied, so it would go back to pending, essentially.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk, when you're ready, on the motion to amend.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Item five B is approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and First Star Fiber, Inc. for recyclable material processing services pursuant to bid number twenty-two dash one-one-zero, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with option to renew for one additional four-year term, introduced by Shobe.
Madam Clerk, I'm not sure that we voted on five A after we did the motion to amend.
You are correct, I jumped the gun that time, my apologies. I'll call a roll for the main motion on item five A. McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Item five B, approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and First Star Fiber, Inc. for recyclable material processing services pursuant to bid number twenty-two dash one-ten, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with option to renew for one additional four-year term, introduced by Shobe.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Call the roll whenever you're ready.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Item five C is approving the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three interlocal agreement on stormwater management between the city and the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District to address stormwater quality and quantity issues, introduced by Shobe.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, any comments?
Everybody, second that one, the other ones are like-
Yeah, I know, keep everybody awake here.
Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Okay, Shobe?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Item five D is amending the issuance of multifamily housing bonds, Union at Middle Creek Project, in an aggregated- Item five D is amending the issuance of multifamily housing bonds, union at Middle Creek Project, in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed thirty million in one or more series, on behalf of Union at Middle Creek LP to provide funds to finance a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of one hundred ninety-two unit multifamily housing project, generally located at Southwest Twenty-seventh and West B Streets. Introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by McGinnis. Comments?
Halsey.
Okay. Madam clerk, when you're ready.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Item five E is approving an amendment to the zoning agreement for change of zone zero-six-zero-one-two to allow retailer restaurants with drive-through services on the property between Ninth and Tenth Streets, north of Van Dorn Street. Introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Comments?
Uh, I have a couple of comments. I'm, um, I'm a little concerned that we don't have accurate numbers for morning AM. Uh, and I know that the neighborhood and, uh, the property owner who owns the single home are asking for, uh, morning numbers, um, on traffic. Uh, and also asking for a little bit more, uh, screening, uh, because of the turn-ins from either direction on Hill Street, um, washing across, uh, windows in the house. Uh, she recognizes that she only owns one of the lots, not both of the lots. Um, but I think it seems reasonable, uh, to give her a little bit more time for that. But more than that, I'd like to know what the traffic counts are. Uh, and not just, uh, a kind of a guess. I had a chance to talk with someone, uh, earlier this afternoon from LTU. And, um, those counts, uh, when they looked at Ninth and Tenth Street were much higher, uh, but those were just based on the traffic on Ninth and Tenth Streets. And I don't know that I want to go with three hundred and forty cars. Uh, and I don't know that I want to go with ninety cars. So I think I'd like to have a better idea of traffic counts. Um, so for that reason, I would ask, um, for a delay, uh, for a few weeks to see if we can get some real traffic count numbers on that project.
Uh, to a date certain or an un-
Uh, let me ask a question of, who should I ask? LTU or Planning? Would one of you come forward and give me an idea? Okay.
Dan, could you please introduce yourself?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dan Carpenter, LTU Traffic Engineering Manager, uh, nine-four-nine West Bond Street. So, uh, we can get some counts along Hill Street of existing traffic over the next few weeks. I think a, um... Uh, what's the Monday before the Fourth of July? I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Monday before the Fourth of July. Is the twenty-seven?
It is. That's correct.
Oh, God, that was a guess.
Yep. That should be, that should give us enough time to get, uh, existing traffic numbers on Hill Street as well as take a closer look at traffic generation, or, sorry, trip generation, um, for a drive-through coffee shop.
Okay. All right. That's not too long, uh, at least from my, where I'm standing. Um, probably should ask the applicant if, uh, that is, uh, too long of a, a delay. Um, sorry.
Are you waiting for?
You want to have that to-
Mr. Chair, while we're, while they're discussing it, so what we're voting on is a change of zone because of the, where the property line was that excludes a drive-through from the north. The business can still be there. It's just a matter whether the, where the drive-through is located if we do nothing, right? This, maybe that's a question for planning and zoning again.
That's a question for Steve.
Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, five-five-five, South Tenth Street. Uh, so this is a little confusing, so it'll take me a moment. But the property is already zoned B-one. Uh, B-one allows a full range of retail and restaurant uses unless there is a zoning agreement that restricts those uses. So when the council approved this change of zone to B-one in two thousand and six, originally these northern two lots were going to be rezoned to O-two office and only be allowed office uses. There's some questions and concerns about the setback, and so there is this zoning agreement put in that said, well, we'll go ahead and rezone this to B-one. That'll help your development south of these two lots. But you agree that on these two lots, you'll only have O-two uses, office zoning district uses, which does not allow retail and restaurant. So the zoning amendment before you is to not only allow a drive-through restaurant, but also, uh, to allow a drive-through lane, but also to allow retail and restaurant uses on these lots, one and two. Uh, so you don't have a change of zone before you today. There isn't a zoning agreement, and what you're amending is that zoning agreement. And that provides a new and updated site plan. Because the current zoning agreement has a site plan that is out of date. And so you have a, a new agreement that would allow those uses. It discusses some landscaping that would be done on the north and the east side of it. There's also be landscaping on the west to the existing neighbor. And it allows the drive-through lanes as well as the retail and restaurant use on these northern two lots.
So right now, is the property exist, you could build an office complex of some type there?
Correct. And, and partly what the applicant was showing out with their traffic numbers is the original plan showed over seven thousand four hundred square feet of drive-through uses on the south part of the lot. That could have been two separate drive-through restaurants, for example, which would have been allowed in the B-one zoning. Um, so they're noting that overall, this amendment, which could have allowed, agreement, could have allowed seven thousand four hundred square feet, it's now only going to be six hundred square feet of drive-through restaurant uses, the small coffee shop, because the south part is being operated now by the Autozone, which is not a drive-through restaurant. So their, their argument was-
It's better now than it-
Is it, there's a lot fewer drive-through trips, even though it allows a drive-through use on the northern part of the site.
Because drive-through was only allowed on the southern part.
It was only on the southern part.
So they're moving the drive-through north.
You're allowing the drive-through to the north, but it's only a six hundred square foot drive-through, not a seven thousand four hundred square foot, which could have been, you know, two large restaurants, so to speak. Um, so it, the argument is it reduces the overall traffic impact and reduces the amount of drive-through uses, though it is allowing drive-through uses on the north side. They've agreed to a twenty-foot setback on the north side, which is greater than the setback that they would normally have had in, in B-one zoning, um, in terms of the use of that property. Um, and so it helps with some buffering, some trees that are planted, some landscaping on the north side. But that the B-one zoning is already there. The access point was already set as coming off of Hill Street. That's already on the current plan. And they have already built the drive-through lane as they were, not drive-through, the turning lane on Tenth Street. That was one of the requirements of the plan. Uh, that's a left-turn lane, actually. Um, that has already been built, as well as a left-turn lane on Ninth Street was already built. So they've made some traffic improvements on the site, and now they're just asking to amend the agreement, not actually change the zoning.
Just amendment to the agreement.
Amendment to the agreement.
Other questions for Mr. Hendrickson while we have him up here?
No, I think I've found my answer. Cause the original was seventy-five hundred worth of drive-throughs, you said, or seventy-four hundred?
Yes. Seventy, I think it was seventy-three hundred, seventy-four hundred square feet of drive-through. That was the original, uh, building here on the south. Um, if that comes back up on the viewer here. There we go. So this building here showed a drive-through both on the north and on the south side. Um, this northern building, here's Lot One and Lot Two. The building was going to span the two lots and also be on part of Lot Three. Lot Three could have potentially had a drive-through as shown here. The size of a drive-through might have been for like, uh, at the time, a dry cleaner drop-off, um, because this would have, three cars is not normally a restaurant kind of stacking. But you, in essence, could have had three drive-throughs. This drive-through would have just been on the part of the building outside of Lot One and Two. Lot One and Two, if this was a, a strip commercial building, these would have been more like office uses. But a O-two also allowed a barber shop. It could have been, uh, could have in essence had a bank here. Um, Lot Three had a drive-through for a bank, even though that's probably not enough stacking for a bank as of the time either. Um, but yes, the, the main point is that this original plan showed two drive-throughs, both of which could have been for a restaurant on this southern part of the site, and this is now just occupied by the Autozone.
How big is the Scooters building? Is it?
As proposed on the site plan, it is six hundred square feet.
Hundred square feet? Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Hendrickson, what was the reasoning by ha, by having the line of like no drive-throughs on the north side? There was that red line, or at least on Mr. Gergen's map, there was a red line that said no drive-throughs north of that line. And what was the reasoning behind that?
The, the reasoning was trying to reflect the original application, which was on the north part of the site, you have residential to the north. You also have residential to the east, was there's to be a somewhat of a transition to the north. So that's why they originally proposed O-two office here. But because that potentially might have had an impact on the setbacks here, they requested it be B-one zoning instead, but with the zoning agreement restricting it back to O-two uses.
Mm-hmm. That, which would have perhaps blocked or buffered.
Yeah. The, the idea was these might have been, um, quieter uses at night. Um, this could have been a bank building, so it might have been closed, but still have people going to an ATM, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Very good. Thank you, Steve. Tim, you want to come up?
For the reasons that Steve was just discussing, um, we feel that this application is less of an impact to the neighborhood and less of an impact to the abutting existing landowner on the property. So we would not be in favor of a deferral at this time or a delay.
Uh, we have a motion in front of us. I, I didn't know if, uh, Councilwoman Washington wanted to put a date in there.
I would do a motion to delay until June twenty-seventh.
Is that with continued public hearing?
With continued public hearing.
Okay. Very good. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion at all? No? Very good. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Beckyus?
No.
Motion lost forty, uh, three to two. Now the, do we go on with the main motion?
Yes, let's go ahead and move on to public hearing. Ordinance's second reading.
No.
Oh, we still have the main motion.
I got a vote on the main.
Oh, I apologize.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. That concludes our section five public hearing resolutions. We'll move on to section six, our ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Call permission to call items six A, six B, and six C together since they are related. Item six A is approving the Cotswold Building Redevelopment Agreement between Cotswold Management LLC and the city relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at three-eleven South Seventh Street and adjacent rights of way and public property in downtown Lincoln, and the related fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two CIP to authorize an appropriate three million, three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars in TIF funds for the Cotswold Building Redevelopment Project, and the related tax allocation bonds for the Cotswold Building Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed three million, three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Very good.
Hi, council members. Uh, Hallie Salem with the City of Lincoln Urban Development Department. Uh, I'm here today to talk about those three items for the Cotswold Building Redevelopment Project and to introduce, uh, with me, representatives from the development team. Um, both, uh, Jerry Cooney and Kathy Rostermeier from the J.A. Woolham Company will be here to present, as well as Kate Hire with, uh, Clark and Anderson. But first, I'm just gonna give us a little reminder of where we are today. Um, this project has been a long time coming. I think, um, when we were talking about it on Friday, uh, Jerry Cooney, uh, reminded us that they have been looking at this project since two thousand and fourteen. Um, we were here at City Council, um, in two thousand and nineteen on an exchange agreement to help with the park. And, and then I was, um, up here in January of this year to talk about a plan amendment. So, um, so that plan amendment was found in conformance with the redevelopment, uh, plan, the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan. And so we are here today, this next step, with, um, the redevelopment agreement and related, uh, resolution and ordinance. So, um, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the project area, um, just to, for everybody to get their, um, bearings. Uh, the- I might have to give a minute because...
Get there here for just a second.
So the project area, I think so. So the project area is in, um, this, this entire area with the site in the blue. Um, this is Seventh Street and this is N Street at the top here. And, um, this is the existing, uh, J.A. Woolham Company Cotswold Building, um, with, uh, uh, another little building back here that will be removed. And then I'll show you the site plan as well, as I talk a little bit more about the expansion. So, uh, the city has negotiated a redevelopment agreement for approximately three point three million dollars in TIF to be used, um, toward the improvements for the project, for acquisition and improvements related, um, and, and spelled out in the agreement. The developer intends to invest, and I say developer, I should say, this is a business, this is an existing business as, and, and expansion. And, um, we work with redevelopers, but they, um, often are, they're, um, individual businesses. And, um, so the J.A. Woolham Co, Company is the business, and they're investing approximately sixteen point nine percent million, sixteen point nine million dollars in the, uh, redevelopment and the rehabilitation of the existing, um, Cotswold Building, and then this expansion here. Um, the, the expansion, the existing building is approximately forty thousand square feet, and the expansion will be approximately fifty-seven thousand square feet. And then there will be some additional parking improvements related to the site. If you remember with the exchange agreement, their parking lot, lot was a little awkward, um, kind of extended up. And then, so we swapped some land. They got to expand their parking and building to the west, and we gained some, uh, some parking for the, and driveway space to the north. And, um, and then the improvements, uh, will include some environmental remediation, uh, site preparation, rehabilitation of the historic facade, for other facade enhancements, uh, the construction of a landscape boundary wall adjacent to the park drive. And this, um, just as a reminder, uh, this, this area here is, uh, park property as well as this driveway here. Um, this property is actually part of the J.A. Woolham Company property and, um, will be their parking for daytime, uh, business hours. And then will be, uh, able to be used by park patrons, um, during the evening and weekend hours. And then upon completion of the project, valuation of the building is expected to be somewhere around, um, eighteen point six million dollars. And then those are the, um, that's the, um, allocation of TIF of approximately three point three million over the twenty-year period. And then, um, and then here are the, uh, related improvements, including, um, environmental remediation, working with NDEE to do that, and, um, alley and, and streetscape improvements around the project that will, uh, be part of that, um, Haymarket South redevelopment, uh, uh, project. Um, and you may have noticed that LES is already working on, uh, undergrounding some of those lines now in Seventh Street and through the park. in Seventh Street and through the park. And with that, I can either answer questions or turn it over to J.A. Woolham Company so they can give you a presentation.
Any questions at this point in time?
Yes. The city will need to be doing some construction along with them with the driveway, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that part of the TIF money or is that the city's own funds?
So there, there have been some enhancements along the way that, where they have contributed, either they're contributing to the parking related to that driveway and they've contributed to some of that storm sewer relocation, but this driveway itself is part of the park project.
Okay. Is there anything different in this redevelopment agreement other than the sharing of the parking? Pretty much like all the others that we have?
Just, just getting a lot of help from them to...
It's a great project.
Do this, and then, and then alley access as well, so that they will be doing the improvements to the alley.
And maybe I can ask them too, I've got some questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Salem before we let her go? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Bo is going to pull up the slideshow up here for you. Ah, very good. Okay, great, all right. Thank you. Still not up yet. Does it introduce yourselves?
Okay.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon.
Welcome back, we should say.
Thank you, thank you. Kathy Rustermeier, 311 South Seventh Street, 68508. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Before we begin, we would like to say what an incredible group of people we've had the opportunity to work with, like Hallie said, over the years, but specifically over the past 11 months, once a week. We've worked with Hallie Salem, Dallas McGee, Dan Marvin, Abby Littrell, Stacy Hagman, J.J. Yost, Tim Gergen, and Kent Seacrest. It has definitely been a partnership, so we've been truly blessed with all of that. Let's see, is our, nope, our PowerPoint is not quite up yet. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Give Jerry an opportunity to introduce himself.
And I'll introduce myself now. My name is Jerry Cooney and I'm an engineer at the Woolham Company. Also 311 South Seventh Street.
Beautiful. It looks like we're up and running, Kathy.
Wonderful, great, thank you. Okay, so, in the beginning, we were formally founded 34 years ago in 1987 by Professor John Woolham, and it was based on his research at the University of Nebraska. So since we have last seen you, we've actually grown. We are now at 67 employees. And all of our employees have a college degree or are working on one. And 85% of our employees have come from Nebraska schools. Jerry?
Yeah, so the Woolham Company, we're a leader in the design, manufacture, and sales of measurement tools called ellipsometers. And so ellipsometry is a non-destructive technique used to determine optical properties of materials. And also the thicknesses of very thin film, some of them as thin as a single atom layer. So this is a view of our conference room where you see a bunch of plaques on the wall. Each one of them related to a patent that we were awarded, we were awarded at some point along the way. We currently have over 200 patents. These patents represent our commitment to research and development, which is, has always been key to our growth and continued work at the Woolham Company. And then this is just a random assortment of some of the dozens of ellipsometers we've made over the past 30-plus years.
Is that what those look like?
(laughing).
And then go ahead. And then finally, just a little comment on some of the, of our customers. So our customer base includes national, corporate, and university research labs, as well as manufacturing facilities throughout the world. Some of the applications that they use our tools for would be semiconductor development, solar panel research and measurement, as well as biochemistry and just advanced materials research. That's all I got. If you have any questions for me, go ahead and shoot.
Any questions at all? No? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Science.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Hire. I'm an architect with Clark and Henderson, 1010 Lincoln Mall, right across the street, 68508. So my company has had the honor of being able to work with this wonderful J.A. Woolham Company on the redesign of their building, the addition of their building. I think we've been working together for the last close to seven, five to seven years. It's been quite a while. Wanted to give you just a very high-level and brief overview of the project's design today. As Hallie mentioned, we are located... Oh, I guess it's not showing.
Go back to the presentation.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
We are located, the new addition is just the west of the current Cotswold, Cotswold Building. The design is largely driven by the historic nature of the current building. You know, the building as it currently sits has punched openings in a largely brick facade with limestone detailing, you know, a standard cornice detail. The building was articulated through the use of brick insets and turning the brick in various formations. So we have relied on those, kind of those design steps to have this building match or, you know, speak to the current nature of the historic building. So here you can see a close-up of the facade. We have punched openings similar to the existing building. Additionally, we have a series of kind of brick detailing colonnades that come up that are reminiscent of the current colonnades, brick colonnades on the historic building. The new building is three stories, as Hallie mentioned, the current building is two stories. We are trying to keep that scale smaller with those punched openings and the brick detailing. And there is a limestone band that extends the length of the building in line with the current limestone band on the historic building. We are separating the new addition from the historic building, honoring the inability to fully match the brick with a, kind of a small glass corridor and circulation amenity. And this would be the side facing the park, so you can start to see how we get a little bit more of an opening. It starts to diverge slightly from that punched opening feel and becomes more opening and welcoming. And then this is the view from N Street, looking all the way across the park to the building. So the two are somewhat reminiscent of each other, trying to honor the historic nature of the Cotswold Building while still speaking to a new and exciting era for J.A. Woolham.
Any questions for Kate? Sir?
I have a quick question. The shared parking between the park and J.A. Woolham, is that going to have a fence or is there going to be some type of barrier between the two?
There is a fence that runs through there. It is a fence that I believe we landed on, the brick fence, is that correct?
Artist's rendering of it.
So here's a, here's a, yep, here's a rendering of it. Let me see if I can find a... So is this kind of a feel? You can't see my cursor, but...
Just one second.
Yeah, so there's a, a brick and kind of wrought iron flavor fence that cuts through there. Yep. So that will be present.
Just wondering how you can keep park patrons maybe from using the J.A. Woolham lot. Nope, great, great job.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. I saw on the plans that there was a, that one, thank you, for the alley, for the working alley. But I saw on the plans that there was something of a gate across the alley at times, or maybe a gate in the future.
Go back a few slides.
Maybe on the site. Or this one might show me if you could point out where the gate mark is. Can show that on this one if we can switch to the... We're just...
Go back and forth.
We're just making this difficult today. So, so the location of the potential gate is right here. So the alley is actually south of where that gate would be. And then there may be, it's not finalized, but there may be a fence installed along the north side of the alley if they find that there are patrons using that as a cut-through. So, so the gate won't necessarily be there, the fencing won't necessarily be there unless they're finding that there's a lot of trespass of that. But I think the intent is to try and keep this as much of a pedestrian alley as possible. And then, but there is still access back here to a Speedway property where they take deliveries. And there's the four-story brick building here of Cusick. So there's, there's some access needs along here in the Kiner. But that will, in the future, mainly be more of a pedestrian access. Adjacent neighbors can still use the alley for their purposes. Right, right. And so maybe at some point this would be redeveloped and not, and be solely a pedestrian access point because this is really intended to be the vehicle turnaround for the driveway. And at some point in the future, there may be access through here, so there doesn't even need to be the turnaround point. And would that also be available to the neighbors on the other side of the alley? Mm-hmm, right. I mean, I can see if there are pedestrians on the street. But there still needs some way to get the doors. Right here, this will be, this will be intended to be more of a turnaround, less about access through here. So trying to keep it less with the delivery vehicles and otherwise. But we can always have that discussion with the adjacent neighbors.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the team? No? Okay, very good. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Now is your time. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, when you're ready?
Thank you.
I'll be calling item Six D, Change of Zone 15021A, Application of Senior Foundation VA Vision and Victory Park LLC to amend the Victory Park PUD to increase allowable building height from two stories to three stories up to 50 feet for multifamily structures and to adjust the lot layout for further plating with associated waivers on property generally located at 600 South 70th Street.
Very good. Madam Clerk, just to know, Councilman McGinnis stepped out.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak on this change of zone? Hi, please come on down. You could just, please start with your name and address, sir.
I will, thank you. George Achola, A-C-H-O-L-A, appearing on behalf of Victory Park LLC. My address is 1004 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. This is part of a larger redevelopment project that I believe the council is aware of. It's an iconic location, 70th and O Street. And we have been developing that project by agreement with the VA and the city. And we do have a development agreement on that project. And kind of what's occurred here is we've got, we're proposing an 84-unit senior housing project, affordable, and with a veterans' preference and priority.
My microphone's not on. There's someone behind you who cannot hear. Could you just, can we move the microphone over just a smidge so that, yeah?
Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
All right, I'll stand over here. I probably should just speak louder. Do you want me to start at the beginning? Okay, so, George Achola, A-C-H-O-L-A, 1004 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska, appearing on behalf of Victory Park LLC. And we are the developer of this property. And we're doing that by agreement by the seniors foundation, as well as the City of Lincoln and the VA. It is an iconic location, 70th and O Street, Omaha, in Lincoln, Nebraska, roughly 60 acres. And we have developed a veterans' housing project there, as well as a community-based outpatient clinic that you see on that location. And we've got four or five different phases that we're also looking to develop. The current phase that we're discussing here today is an 84-unit senior housing project that would have a veteran preference, veteran priority, which means the veterans get first shot at all the units of that property. And then there's not enough veterans that we can fill it up with general seniors from the community. It would be an affordable housing project. So I think that's critical for the council to know because I know that is a critical component of what the City of Lincoln is looking at. The reason that we're here today is as we went through the divine process, and one of the things that we noticed is just kind of the, some of the terrain, the way that the, the location that we wanted to build this property is kind of set up. We basically had to go three stories to make a building fit. So we were 15 feet above our initial height requirement. And so what we're asking is an amendment to the PUD to allow us to go up to three stories instead of two stories. I will tell you, just for, you know, just for reference, this is on historical campus. So there are other restrictions that do come with the building, so it will be an attractive building. It will have certain brick and certain other requirements to maintain the historical character of that, of that location. So I want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. And so, simple, pretty straightforward, 15 feet amendment on the height. So that's essentially what we're asking for here.
Very good. Questions? Your show, did you have a question?
No, no, it was just a kind of a thank you for explaining.
Very good. Councilwoman Washington?
I do have questions, thank you very much.
All yours.
All right. Have you met with the neighborhood associations?
We have not at this phase, for this particular phase. We did have extensive meetings with the neighbors when we began this process. I think we had three or four or five meetings with the neighbors as we kind of developed this project and we kind of put it into fruition. Things have been somewhat slow just given the state of the construction market. And so we've done the SEBAC and now we're looking to do this piece. Our intention and our plan as we moved forward, kind of, these things started to fall into place. We were looking to have a meeting with the neighbors, probably sometime this summer, to just kind of advise of where we're at, what our next plans are, what the remaining phases are going to look like, and what the current state of the development is.
Okay, well, that I think will be very important. If, if you had been coming to council on a regular basis, you'd know that I almost always ask questions around height waivers.
I will not forget that.
Okay. Because a height makes, makes a difference and 15 feet is, can be sizable for, and you have a neighborhood behind you that's an R1, R2 neighborhood. And I would very much like to know what the neighbors are feeling about that height. And I'd like to know all the setbacks that you're providing on that and anything about lights, signages, mechanicals on the roof, things like that. Just so that the neighbors have a better understanding of what the differences would be in the project.
We can do that. I have no problem doing that.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure, I would like to ask a question now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Show.
Mr. Achola, thanks for coming forward.
Thank you.
I'm trying to, I've actually pulled up Google Maps of Victory Park and I'm trying to understand where this building will go. Can you give me?
Do you see, and I should have brought the map with me, but do you see the current VASH building or the 70-year building that's currently on the, on that project? It's just to, I'm trying to remember Lincoln, I got to remember Lincoln on my where I'm at. So it's to the north of that building. So you know the SEBAC is, where we built the SEBAC. So it's just going to be to the east of the SEBAC and to the north of the new VASH building.
We might have city staff be able to, I don't know if Mr. Henderson may have a layout that would be helpful?
Obviously, I need to spend more time out there. I'm not...
The new clinic here, the VASH building, and then these ones, just, just around the back here.
Sorry, we can't see where you're pointing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
These buildings along the back, so this is the new VASH housing, veterans', homeless housing here. This is the clinic. So it's these buildings right along here.
Yep.
I see Honor Drive, so they'll be to the east and north of Honor Drive.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Other questions?
Can you tell me what the, with the approximate setback, the numbers are fuzzy? I can't really see them. So what's the approximate setback of that building from the lot line?
It's at 100 feet.
100, thank you.
While you're there, gentlemen, so I see, I see Honor Drive, I see where the building's going to go and you're asking for the height waiver. Are those buildable lots to the north and east of those or?
Yeah, so these are the existing homes that have always backed up to the Veterans Hospital. And so as part of the original plan... And so, as part of the original plan, that setback, uh, was established here between any new construction and the homes. So, that, that setback does not change. The application is just asking that these buildings, which were gonna be shown as two stories, they now wanna do three stories and up to 50 feet in height. But this resolution is drafted that there would be no more than three stories.
Correct.
Um, because with the pitched roof, you can get over 35 feet even with three stories because of the way we measure the height. Other questions? Nope? Okay. Very good.
Thank you. I'll remain for you to follow up. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here to, today, to speak on this item? Please come forward if you'll just start, sir, with your name and your address.
I'm Ed Snobble.
Thank you.
7317 South Wiggwood Drive. I'm a veteran. I get my services out there, and I volunteer at the hospital.
Good catch.
First thing we bring up is, again, outside the last three years, we never heard a thing from them until I got the planning commission letter a couple of days before the planning hearing. 'Cause before that, we had four or five meetings with, with the developer. So, that's, uh, one of our big things is, we like to have more input in what's going on. Second item, I don't trust them. Back housing's been open them for three years, and they were gonna plant trees between the back housing and the neighborhood. You go out there now, there's, there's no trees. Not a one. And on the second side, we've asked that the flag be flown. They said, "Yeah, we'll, we'll keep the flag flowing." Hasn't been up since they, since they took over. And why the height? It's money. They can get more money. That's exactly what they want. And we like to see the designs of the building. What they gonna be like? They've had three years to design them. Where, where are some plans? If they're gonna add the 15 feet, how about moving them back another 50 feet from the fence line? Give us more room for more trees and to block the views to the neighborhood. And we also like to have the plans on what's going on on the rest of the site. 'Cause at one time, they were gonna put medical buildings on the south side. Are they still doing that? Nobody knows. And are they gonna replace the trees that they've taken out due to grading, or gonna take out, and the ones that have died? Just a couple of questions we'd like to have answered. Thank you.
Good. Questions for...
I've lived out there for 50 years, and I know the neighborhood.
(laughing) Any questions for Mr. Snapple?
Not right now, but thank you.
All right, very good.
Like I said, when I moved out there, I couldn't even see the hospital from my neighborhood 'cause of all the trees that were out there.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to testify on this? Nope. Very good. Sir, would you like to come back up and offer any response?
Yes, I would like to respond, and I will have a conversation with Mr. Snobble at some point, and we will address some of these issues. Um, you know, the first one that kind of concerns me is this flag flown issue. That's a simple one. I was not aware of that. Um, the VA had control of that flag until they moved out, and I was probably just a drop-off when they moved out of that main building and went to their campus. So, we will talk to our management folks, and we will see whether we can get some flags and we get those flags up and flying fairly quickly. So, that one's a, that one's an easy check. As far as the trees, you know, since we're still in the construction planning and we're still trying to figure out what's going to happen, I think it'd be premature to go ahead and plant, to plant the trees at this junction. But at some point, those trees will be planted, 'cause they're as part of the plan, and they're already in there. So, you know, I think everybody understood there was gonna be additional development there, and to plant trees at that junction would be premature. We will plant those trees, that's a promise. Um, design, that's easy enough. We can provide those designs to them, and we can have a meeting where those designs can be shown, uh, and we will, uh, we'll share that with the folks. Um, and as far as making more money, this is affordable housing. And I, I don't know how much you guys get into the economics of affordable housing. They're not moneymakers. You do it because you have a passion for it. You know, do we make a little bit of money? Yeah. But I can tell you probably at the end of the day, chances are, we probably break even when it's all said and done, when we, when we, when we develop affordable housing. We did it, we do it because our owner and our company believes that it's the right thing to do, and it's the right thing to do for the communities of Omaha and for Lincoln. And, you know, you guys can look at our NIFR application. The numbers are out there, they're public. These things do make a lot of money, so... Um, but I will make sure, you know, I, I respect Mr. Snobble, I do remember him. When, I do remember him from back in those days when we were going through this, and we will have continued conversations to make sure that he understands exactly, um, what's going on out there. As far as the medical office building, um, we're working on that. You know, as you guys know, we, we've had conversations with some potential, uh, medical, uh, companies about that south side. Nothing's really come to fruition, and that work continues, and that's probably the main reason Mr. McGinnis is not here, 'cause he's the individual that's primarily helping us try to get that done. So, those things are all still in play. And I do, one, one thing I will say, as Mr. Snobble was right, it probably is time for us to come, come back and have another update with the neighbors and let them know specifically where we are, and I promise the council that we will do that.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
That concludes our public hearing, Section 6. We can now move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Will Mr. McGinnis be coming back?
Hello.
You got it?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Got all about him.
Good thing you're on top of it.
Mr. Who? I'm good, thank you.
Item 7A, approving a real estate sales agreement between the City of Lincoln and Creek Carrier Corporation for the sale of city-owned property generally located at Northwest Roundhouse Drive and West O Street, introduced by Ray Bold.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Becky S.
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7B is approving a real estate sales agreement between the City of Lincoln and Bryan and Brooklyn Curry for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 6th and Cedar Streets in Ashland, Nebraska, introduced by Ray Bold.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Schob and seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Becky S.
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7C is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.54.050, prohibited acts to clarify and revise the regulations recording conflict of interest for present and former officers or employees of the city, and repealing Section 2.54.050 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Ray Bold.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Schob, seconded by Bowers. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Becky S.
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7D is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.62.165, purchase of forfeited service credit under this plan, purchase of prior service credit for service for another governmental employer to clarify ordinance language and to treat all pension members equally by limiting to one purchase transaction those members eligible to purchase forfeited service credit and by allowing a partial service credit purchase to members eligible to purchase prior service credit, introduced by Ray Bold. So, moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Washington, seconded by Schob. Comments?
This is a really good thing. I'm so glad that we have this as an option, a, a, a benefit for our first responders.
Other comments? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Becky S.
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. That concludes our ordinance, third reading and related resolutions. Moving on to Section 8, Resolutions First Readings are items 8A through 8M. Ordinance's First Readings and Related Resolutions are items in Section 9 are items 9A through 9M. And we have pending list, item 10A.
All right, very good. Just as a reminder, we have open microphone sessions on June 13th and June 27th this month. May... Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, acknowledging that this is not an open mic night, my friend Mr. Holloway came to address the council. Would it be, may I ask him a question of why he's here? Would you come, would the council relinquish?
Good evening, council. Ed Holloway, 8310 Sandalwood Drive, and I appreciate...
Traditionally, this is not, so we're kind of out of order, so make it brief.
I, I understand. I'll, I'll be very brief. I came to invite you to our emergency preparedness exercise that we do annually, that Mr. Schob has supported for the last six years, and recently came out to our new facility. And so, I have a very brief statement if you'd be so willing to listen.
Please do so.
I thank you so much. And I put it all in letter form, too, so that I could expedite. I thought last week, maybe it would transfer over. Again, Ed Holloway, I'm, I'm representing the Lincoln Amateur Radio Club and Nebraska Amateur Radio Emergency Services.